Good afternoon and welcome to the reconvening of the City Council Budget Hearings for Budget Year 2022. My name is Erica Strasburger and I will be chairing the Department of Innovation and Performance. So, welcome City Council Budget Director Bill Urbannick and welcome Innovation Performance Director Heidi Norman with us today. And I want to turn it over to Director Urbannick to go over some numbers for this department.
Sure. Thank you. Today we have the Department of Innovation Performance. The mission of the department is to elevate the work of the city government. IMP continues to focus on developing and strengthening the core IT infrastructure of the city, including the network hosting endpoints and applications. The Department of Innovation and Performance is divided into the following general areas. IT operations, that's where you'll find our help desk, IT technology, which supports all the software for the city, security and risk, which does all the cybersecurity risk assessment, project management office. You have also the administration, which is responsible for the budget, the finances, human resources of the department. And then you have communications, which includes the 311 response line, print shop communications, and also David Finer's fine management of the cable folks here, the city channel. Also, you have the Bureau of Innovation. The function of innovation supports city staff through performance improvement, expertise, data analysis, and business relationship management through the city. On the financial end of things, the total budget for the Department of Innovation Performance for 2022 as proposed is $18,754,794. That's an increase of approximately $1.5 million or 8.8%. Total full-time positions are 72. That is a decrease of two positions from the 2021 budget. Salary changes in positions of note, senior manager service desk and devices has been eliminated. That's a $90,000 reduction. Print shop coordinator was also eliminated. That's a approximately a $60,000 reduction in salary. One of two enterprise application administrators were converted to data service engineers with the same pay rate. So there's no change for those, but a change in title and operations. Innovation Performance non-salary subclasses changed across 13 separate line items for a net increase of $1.238 million or 11%. Larger changes are computer maintenance increased by $1.5 million. This line item hosts over 30 technology contracts. Payroll processing decreased by $305,000 mainly because the Ceridian payroll contract has been moved to Human Resources, who we'll speak with tomorrow. Telephone decreased by $335,000. Net P G H, I'm sorry, broadband fiber decreased from $300,000. Printing and binding increased by $200,000. The citywide Amcon printer contract is included in that. Machinery and equipment increased by $111,000. Increased costs for the Wi-Fi access points and anticipated contractual increase for Dell, and a decrease for new mobile data terminals were a result of that amount. Innovation and performance revenues, and we'll be talking about this one on Wednesday, Councilwoman. The cable bureau revenue is projected to be $4,292,000. That's the same as 2021. That is a decrease, though, going back to 2019 of 15%. Next, you'll see Innovation Performance Capital Projects. Capital projects contained in the capital budget. $240,000 will be for information systems modernization and $183,000 goes into information systems modernization. $183,000 of the A R P money for tech upgrades to three separate recreation centers. Innovation Performance also has a few trust funds. First two here are related to the cable function. Comcast Trust Fund, current balance in the Comcast Trust Fund, $603,000. Verizon Trust Fund, current balance is $372,000. Technology Modernization Trust Fund was just created, as you know, and the one-stop P G H permitting Technology Trust Fund was also just created. There's been no activity in those trust funds. For the Technology Modernization Trust Fund, there is a lot added in the budget of $1.4 million. That is a transfer directly from our fund balance to fund the beginning of this trust fund. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Director. And let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilman Bobby Wilson. Welcome, Councilman. Director Norman, I understand that you and your team have a presentation to share with us.
I do. Thank you. I'll share that presentation now. Just let me know when you're able to see that.
Okay, we can see it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. This is just a short presentation to expand a little bit upon what Mr. Urbannick was speaking of with regard to the budget for Department of Innovation and Performance for next year. I'm going to talk very briefly about some of the big-ticket items that we accomplished this current year in 2021 and the areas of focus that we're planning on for next year in 2022, and a little bit of analysis around the proposed budget that we have for the department. So some of the really important things that the department accomplished this year are in five particular areas. In our IT infrastructure area, I'm sure the council is familiar, that we moved to a cloud infrastructure. That was very successful. 80% of our infrastructure is now in the cloud. We also installed new CAT 6A wiring, which is the high standard for the industry on Ethernet cabling and Wi-Fi throughout CCB, as well as partnered with a company for managed network services. In cybersecurity, we implemented multi-factor authentication and also installed hard drive encryption on the vast majority of devices in the city. And we are monitoring what devices are on the network and what they're doing. All of this is to make sure that Pittsburgh remains a hardened target to deter any theft or other threats that might be coming in our direction. In data services, this week we are launching Dashboard to better inform the public of services provided and fiscal management of the city. It's something that's a long time coming and we're very excited about. Our Devices team has done a remarkable job with our tech refresh program for computers. We have replaced all of the Windows 7 computers by the beginning of 2022. And over the course of this year, we have deployed about 650 Windows 10 computers. So that was a pretty big effort. As you know, we came back many of the departments into the office in the middle of 2021. And so the shift from almost full remote working for many office staff to a hybrid telecommuting situation really made it necessary for our Devices team to not only refresh those computers and make sure that folks have the right technology they need to be able to do their jobs successfully, but also so that they were set up to do their jobs in a mobile format where they could be working in the office or from a remote location. And finally, two really significant updates and service expansion for two of our enterprise applications are the J D Edwards application, which is the E R P system for the city, as well as Arc G I S, which is the geographic information systems that underpin so many of the other software systems in the city. So those were two really big accomplishments for our applications team that we're super proud of. Next year, IMP is going to continue focusing on building the foundations of a really strong, reliable, and fiscally responsible IT environment to benefit residents and city staff, and we've got six priority focus areas. On devices, we are going to launch our mobile tech refresh program for phones and tablets. Those devices will be refreshed approximately every three years to make sure that the devices remain strong and resilient for our staff that are using them. Our IT infrastructure team is going to begin the rollout and construction of the Net P G H wide area network, something that we're very excited about, and continue our work on facilities rewiring and Wi-Fi with our high priority one facilities outside of CCB. Our Data Services team launched a data governance effort this year, but will really be expanding upon that with our data governance committee, as well as the ability to provide expanded analytics across all of our operating departments. So something super important that I think many of the directors are going to be really excited about for next year. Our Service Desk is launching, March 1st is our target date, our new IMP customer service center. That includes a new technology system called an IT service management system along with our service catalog so that we are better responding to requests from our colleagues across the departments and are able to respond quickly to incidents that are reported. Our Applications team is going to continue with the software roadmap that was started in 2019 and replacing custom apps with COTS is commercial off-the-shelf software and continuing to digitize what are currently manual workflows. So because our applications are maintained and updated by the vendors that have sold them to us, that frees up some of the Applications team time to work with departments, to use the software we have in a fuller way and actually start to digitize some of those workflows. And we've seen, you know, successful transitions of this type of thing with, for example, the DocuSign-type process where the workflow will go from one person to the next in the appropriate order for signature on legal documents. Our Innovation team is very excited. We are closing in on Bloomberg's What Works Cities Silver Certification. We hope to have that certification in the first half of next year and are really looking forward to celebrating with all of you. There are a lot of departments that have been working very hard to meet those high standards and it's exciting progress. And finally, project management training. There are many departments who have really been requesting more project management training for staff who are designated to lead projects, particularly IT projects in their departments. And we will be bringing that to them starting in the first quarter of next year. So here is a slightly different breakdown from what Mr. Urbannick showed you in terms of our operating budget. You can see that in 2022, our operating budget is going to be $18.75 million. Our capital budget is $424,000 and we have this new IT modernization fund that is anticipated to be funded with $1.4 million. This is a change from previous years. And I want to explain how I look at these three sort of buckets of money in our overall budget. What the addition of the modernization fund does is it allows me to show you and the mayor's office exactly what it costs to keep the lights on with all of the different programs and IT services that my department is responsible for. We anticipate in 2022, it will cost $18.75 million. And that is really and truly for running the operations of this department and for keeping the lights on, right? The capital budget is where we really start to improve on some things. And this is dedicated to that improvement in the facilities where we are going to be installing Wi-Fi and upgrading the wiring and the security of those hard assets in additional facilities beyond CCB next year. And then the IT modernization fund, I think of that as where the city really begins to look at our services that we provide to the public and where we begin to transform those services. Just to remind you, the IT modernization fund is relatively new. What it is intended for is projects, IT projects that are new, that the departments have requested and have been approved to move forward with next year. That modernization fund is only to be spent on those projects which have been approved for the departments in their first year of implementation. So that's just the getting started fund. So that's what that fund is, and together it makes up the entire budget for my department. So let's dive in a little bit into the budget. So for our operating budget, the proposal is $18.75 million. And you can see on this chart that when you include both operating and capital budget, that IMP has the ninth largest budget among the major departments in the city. So that's kind of where we stand. In addition, when we compare how much is spent in the IMP budget to other cities which have budgets of approximately the same size, we are directly in line with those other cities. On average, other cities with a budget of our size spend about 3.2% on their IT departments, and we are obviously right there with them. As you can see on the documentation that Mr. Urbannick shared, this is a breakdown of our budget and sort of the percentages that are being spent out of the operating budget itself. And I'd like to go into a little bit more detail on each one of these wedges on our pie chart. On our personnel budget, 33% of our operating expenses go toward personnel, both their salaries and wages, as well as their benefits programs. It's important to note that of the major departments in the city, that the percentage that we are spending of our budget on personnel is second from the lowest with Office of Management and Budget being the only major department that has a lower percentage of their budget spent on personnel than we do. As Mr. Urbannick said, we have three divisions in the department. Information Technology is certainly our largest division with 43 staff members in that division, as well as Communications and Innovation in the Project Management Office. Of those 43 staff members that are designated specifically to information technology, each one of them right now is expected to support 72 end users. And that is a 37% increase over five years ago. In 2016, each IT staff member was expected to support 46 end users. So the number of end users per IT person has really increased over the past five years. Further, the percentage of our budget that is spent on staff has been reduced from five years ago in 2016 from 45% to the 34% that we're spending today. And it is important to note that while no new staff positions were approved for next year, in fact, we lost two staff positions, we have an increased demand for increasing capacity with new projects of 15 new IT projects. Nine of them through the IT modernization fund, six of them through other departments' budgets or grants that they received. So we're having a little bit of an issue trying to figure out how do we keep the lights on and expand and bring in all of these new services while also reducing staff. On professional and technical services, we spend 37% of our budget on those services. We are the top of the line in terms of the other departments on the percentage of services that we're spending in this particular account line item. The services that we purchase in that line item include things like our server hosting, our cloud storage, all of the software licenses for the wide variety of software that we purchase, and our software as a service subscription. So both of the final two bullets are both software, just two different types. Our other expenses wedge is also the largest by far as percentage of our budget compared to the other departments at 19%. Included in the other expenses category are all of the city employees' mobile phones, all of the city employees' data plans, all of the city employees' desk phones, all of the internet services that are provided by our various service providers today, as well as all of the printing and printer leases. So printing costs per page for every department, as well as all of the printer leases for all of those departments. I mean, that's why that other budget line wedge is so large. Property expenses, we are very close to the top of all of the departments in terms of that, as well as the percentages of our budget. It represents 10% of our operating expenses. And within that budget line includes machinery and equipment. So things like computer leases, our Wi-Fi access points, the MDT Toughbooks that are in police cars. Those are all considered property and assets that we either lease or own. That's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Director Norman. And let the record reflect that we've been joined by Councilwoman Deb Groth and Councilman Anthony Coghill. And I'm happy to turn it over to my colleagues. I'll go in order of appearance. I also wanted to note that Council President Kale Smith did join us by Zoom for a little while to listen in and had to depart for a meeting. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I really appreciated the presentation. I think we should make sure that all departments show up with a nice presentation like that. Very informative. It's nice to know that where your department stands with other departments and what you're doing. Could you expand on, I think, the system that picks up what you say and puts it, what's that called? The closed captions, the caption hearing? I think I heard you right. You said Dashboard?
Yes. Dashboard is essentially a dashboard. It is going to be launched on Thursday of this week. And it is going to show the information to the public in a transparent way about the operations and the services that are being provided to the public, as well as the financial management of the city. So it will have items on it such as information about 311 requests and how many tickets have been opened and closed in each of those types of categories, 911 calls and the services provided by our public safety bureaus. It will have information on how much money is budgeted versus spent for the different departments and lines of service, information like that.
Interesting. Yeah, the closed captioning recorded as Dashboard. But it's Dashboard.
Dashboard.
I like that. I like that. I kept repeating it in my head as you were talking. So, all right, so it's going to show like people who work for the city, closed internal tickets? Is that, is that part of it, or this is all just a dashboard where people can go on and click around and see just how the city is currently operating?
Yeah, this is for the public. So for example, people in your district would be able to go on to Dashboard. And if they're interested, click on their neighborhood and see what 311 ticket requests have been submitted, what types of tickets. So, you know, how many abandoned vehicles have been requested to be removed? And, you know, how many litter pickups or, you know, cutting grass, things like that, that are coming through 311, and how many of those tickets are currently open and how many of them have been closed by the departments for service?
Okay, interesting. Well, don't show them the data that says how many abandoned vehicles we take off a private property where we can't contact the property owner. And they're just having, they just have like a junkyard on their property and they live in like Mount Lebanon or something. Those are the worst because we need their permission to go on the property. Let's hide that data because we're, no one does well on that.
Right.
Sorry, it's a bad civic joke. So anyway, what are the 30 different contracts that we have for technology contracts? I know it's $1,005,000. Computer maintenance increased by $1,005,000, 30 different technology contracts. Could you help me understand what's going on there?
I can expand on what some of those are. So some of the contracts, I'll try and name some of the things that you're probably more familiar with. So we have a contract with Qsend, which is our ticketing system for 311. We have contracts for Oracle licenses, which is a database system that backs up our J D E, which is our J D Edwards E R P system. We have contracts for AutoCAD, which a number of folks who are in facilities and need to do designs, architectural-type designs, or engineers who need to do architectural-type designs, that's a type of software that they use specialized for them. Of course, they also use G I S.
Sorry, I just wanted to interrupt. So every different contract that we enter, every different software, that's just another, it's just another... That includes maintenance, though. Whatever technology contract, it always includes maintenance. So it's not like we have 30 different maintenance contracts. Okay. Okay, so it's one thing with the contract we already have. Okay. Thanks for that clarity. Okay. So I see stuff was moved over to HR for Ceridian payroll. What about our ability to do time cards online? I know that police, fire, EMS, other departments have it, but I mean, I'm just curious where we're at with getting the software to do time cards online.
So my understanding right now is that for those folks who don't submit their time online today, that we are rolling out with Human Resources and their payroll group, time clocks that are automated, that will be attached to computers that will help the payroll to go into the Ceridian system through biometrics and other technical login avenues.
Does that work for every department? What about departments that don't have computer login thing? Like if you're a DPW worker?
Right. So that's exactly where those time clocks will be going in. And the time clocks are actually attached to a computer. And so the installation of those is, I believe, planned over...
Oh, so you're saying there is like a separate computer to be set up at the different, let's just say, DPW.
Different facilities.
Vision.
There will actually be a time clock that they can log in and log out that's attached to a computer that will log their time into the payroll system. Yes.
Yeah, I still qualify as a millennial. I went straight to like, oh, I'm on the computer and I just start hitting the time clock like a timed, like I'm working, like a little widget or something. Okay. That's not what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about if a worker goes into a division and there will be a time clock where they say, I'm here, I'm on the job, I'm on the clock, right? And at the end of their shift, they will log out and that time clock will enter that information into the payroll system in Ceridian.
Okay, what about for everyone else that, I think the current system is... I think the current system is, people are modernized up to where it's just set up as an email.
So I think most departments have payroll clerks and they have, they enter in folks' times.
Yeah, but what's preventing us from just buying Cronos? I just, I don't understand.
I'm sorry, say it again?
Like, you know, the software Cronos? It's widely used. Why don't we just buy Cronos and then everyone does their time card online?
Well, the system we bought is very much like Cronos. It's called Ceridian. That was purchased, I believe, a little over a year ago by the Human Resources Department and they're rolling that out.
Okay, okay.
We've been on Ceridian payroll for quite a while now.
Okay. Well, that's payroll, but so they're just gonna include the time card part on, on Ceridian now?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll look forward to that.
You too.
Yeah. All right. Thanks for your time.
Of course.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So thank you, Director Norman, for your presentation. I concur. That is, you always give excellent presentations, no matter whether the topic, especially at the budget hearings. And I think it was illuminating to see you break down your department budget by the service level that your employees are providing, that what it looked to me like it was double the number of people that they're serving. Definitely double the number of devices, maybe?
Yeah, the number of people, end users that are IT personnel are expected to serve has increased by thirty seven percent over the last five years.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So that's significant and but yet you, you have fewer personnel. Right. Right. So that that concerns me and I wanted to give you an opportunity to talk about, I think there's like maybe a help desk person, position is being eliminated. And so what is changing in how you're continuing to provide service to employees?
So what I'll say is, I mean, it is a challenging environment, right? And, and you know, as the city, I think, looks forward, we want to make sure that we're being very fiscally prudent. I think the challenge for me is not in the keeping the lights on, right? So, so we, we really do have it covered when it comes to, you know, continuing to maintain everything that we have today in the IT section of the department. The challenge really comes with the expanded services that are being requested. And at some point, something is going to have to give, right? Because I can't both keep the lights on and continue adding new lines of services and more and more IT without additional staff to help not only implement, but also maintain those systems. So that's where we're going to have to take, I think, a pretty hard look next year at the, the projects that have been requested to determine, you know, can we do these projects? Or do we need to hire, or does the department that's requesting it need to hire consultants in order to help us be able to, you know, move those projects forward? Or do we push those projects back or cancel them because we simply don't have the human bandwidth to take on the extra responsibility? Because it's not just, I mean, one of the harder things is there's a lot of work when you're trying to introduce and, and implement a new system, right? There's a huge bolus of work and lots of people from multiple teams would need to work together. But then there's the ongoing, like, how do you administer these systems and maintain them and make sure that they are running as we begin to move them out of the modernization fund and over into the operating fund and moving from transform into now we just have to run them? So that it is a challenge and it is something that I expect to work very closely with the mayor-elect and, you know, and the team, my committee chair next year.
So I'm gonna say that there's a difference between you, you're, when you, when you're using the vocabulary from your chair of being requests for, you know, expanded products or new, new support that you're providing to departments. Am I right to imagine that as departments looking for new software packages? And am I wrong to also jump to the conclusion that it's because they are looking for greater analytics about their department business?
Um, so it's, it's actually a wide variety of things. In some cases, it, it is actually brand new software or replacement software where they're, they're moving away from a system that really wasn't serving them well and they want to provide better services in a more automated fashion for the residents of Pittsburgh. In other cases, it is, they're requesting expansion. So where we might have, for example, GPS tracking for one department or a division within a department, they want to expand and have GPS tracking for another division or a new department and their fleet of vehicles. And in other cases, it's literally working on, you know, requests for network or hardware. You know, I think Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, of course, has a traffic management network and a smart spine's project. And they currently have no one to oversee those projects from a technical end. And IMP has never been responsible for that network or those projects. And I literally don't have anyone. I have, I have to, I would have to have another network engineer. I would have to have another network technician in order to be able to really assist in the way that those projects need. So that's something, again, that I'm going to be working with the Director of DOMI and making sure that in order for them to move forward, that they're probably gonna have to hire consultants to actually lead that work because I don't, I don't see any way of us being able to cover it.
I'm just gonna have to repeat that. So our Department of Mobility and Infrastructure has a traffic management project that is right now completely hypothetical because it's completely unstaffed.
Well, no, the traffic management center is staffed, but the network, some of the equipment is going end of life and it literally needs to physically be moved over to the new four one two building for the opening of that. And their smart spines project, of course, the traffic lights on those smart spines will be networked and will have backhaul that come back into the city's network. And so we'll need people in my department leading that or tech, technical people leading those efforts. And I, I, I literally have no one to be able to do that right now. So that's something that it can be, it can be managed, you know, in these kinds of things, there's, there's two sides to the scale, right? There's who's gonna work on these and it can't, the answer can be staff, full-time staff. It can be consultants, it can be managed network services. There are a variety of things you can do. Or the number of projects, right? And so figuring out what the right balance is, is something that I think that we're just still working on. But it is challenging.
So I, I like to think myself as neither like a technologist nor a total Luddite, but that in our job at this table, we want to be pragmatic about the data work that we do. Certainly there is, and I always say this when we have these discussions, there is a huge upside. I'm really kind of like a data enthusiast. I love data, but we have to budget for it and we have to resource it. And we have to be able to have the budget to maintain and continue it, right? And so technology doesn't on its face by itself, you know, take itself out of the box and magically solve your problems. It is still a human resources issue. We have to know what problems we are trying to solve, what questions we're trying to answer in order to design the right tool and not pay too little or not pay too much and have the people who can actually execute and implement it. And so that's one of the things I always appreciate about your presentations. I think that we have stumbled quite a bit inside our departments about the level of understanding of everything I just said in, in, in the human resourcing and knowledge building and skill building inside the departments in order to actually take advantage of the money that council has allocated and, and get the most out of it. And at worst, we've spent money that went down a, a black hole. Right? And we, we know there's some very notable public examples where that's happened in the past. And so we just don't want to do that moving forward. And so I think we have, we've said this many times, different times at the table, but it's almost like we need a kind of retrospective on what our data expenditures have been and kind of what we've gotten out of them in the various departments. You know, over the years, while we've all sat here, we voted on, it seems like it's always a million dollars here or a million dollars there. You know, law department needs software, our city clerk needs software, our, you know, IMP needs software, the PLI needs software. Well, wait, now they need a different software. And then the other departments need the same software now so it can coordinate, you know, Cartograph or something so we can talk across GIS systems, which I support. But I feel like we, again, have, have stumbled somewhat and it seems like we're always kind of just not quite in rhythm with the personnel assigned and really clear specifications. And I think this is why you wanted us to create that trust fund that we did pass for you recently. And I'm hoping that that staffing and the technology council kind of thing that you've got convened maybe needs to report back out to council in a little more detail so we can be more confident in our allocations moving forward. And I'll just leave it at that and we can talk about the traffic management and smart spine investments, possibly another, another time in depth. I I am, I'm really glad, I've said this before in these kinds of hearings, I, I'm really glad that we are doing the investments in hardware. It's really truly out of date. I've given the examples before where I opened a closet at one of our city-owned buildings and it was literally full of like telephone wire. It's like a giant bundle. You could barely wrap your arms around it and it was part of the backbone of our nine one one system. Now, I'm talking like nineteen eighties telephone wire. And it was, it's really, it was really, really, really scary and, and not just that it's looked like a hazard and it was, I think, just forgotten that it was there. And it's, you know, it's not just that it's about nine one one, it could have been other kinds of communication backbone that was in there as well. And it's, it was just really, really decades out of date. So when we're giving people devices to work with, it's no good if they really aren't getting, you know, connected the way they need to be connected. And so it's, it's great that you're there, even on our city council hall. You've, you've rebuilt the backbone on the city council hall, I think, with finally with fiber. And I want to thank you publicly for that because I'd gone through days of my office being down and not being able to access their computers at all over the years, entire days, just being offline. So we won't hopefully have that anymore. I'm gonna need to just spend a couple more minutes asking you about something since we're at the end of the year here and we're end of the, end of the mayoral administration. And so I'm gonna bring up a slightly touchy subject from earlier this year, which was the Zen City software that council voted on. And I, I posed and council members re-upped the contract for twelve months. And I had a series of questions about that contract that you don't have the answers to in front of you probably. But I specifically was asking the administration, and I have the email from May, that that was the surveillance software that the mayor, only the mayor's office has to surveil social media in the city and citizens and that I felt we needed to have more control and constraints over. And in that email, which I'm kind of scrolling now, my phone lost it. I asked, I wanted to see specifically which devices had access to that software and which personnel are supposed to have access to that software and how that transition is going to be made so that people aren't walking out the door with citizens' data in their possession. So can you, can you speak to that?
I don't have answers for you right now, but I'm more than happy to get those answers for you and deliver them to you by the end of this week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I've got, when I find the email, I'll make sure I forward it back to you. It's from May of this year. And I never got a response from, I would like some, I would appreciate the responses. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. I'm Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And hello to you, Heidi. Thank you for being here and thanks for your presentation. Just a couple of quick, small things for me, Heidi, when it comes to your department. I noticed cable bureau revenue. Maybe I missed it, I guess, when Mr. Urbannick or you may have gone over this. So we collect revenue from?
Yes. So we have a franchise agreement with both Comcast and Verizon. They, that is a result of the city owning the rights of Way and those companies having equipment and fiber lines in our rights of Way. So we receive, we do receive monies into those trust funds.
Yeah. So a little over four million dollars for them to put their antennas or satellites or whatever is involved on our property. Is that where that comes from?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's usually within the conduit that's under the streets and sometimes it's wire that's hung on our poles.
And we negotiate that every year with them? Or is it, I saw last year, it's same as, it was collected last year. Is that something that's ongoing with them?
Either ten-year agreements, what they've been in the past as part of the, the old federal cable bureau act or cable act, which nationwide it's five percent from municipalities as part of the, as part of creating.
So it's regulated then? It's not something we negotiate with the?
Yes, you do. Every ten years you go and you negotiate with the particular cable provider. We had a single cable provider for years. And then a few years back, well, ten years ago, we added Verizon to compete alongside Comcast.
Yeah. So it's just those two companies?
Former PCI.
Right. So it's just those two companies that we receive?
Right now. And that's, that's direct money that gets booked to the general fund. There's also two other agreements that were so well negotiated this time again that provide money for both PCTV and for, for our cable bureau.
And, and does that money go into our general fund? Where's, where's that?
Money for the cable bureau goes into a trust. We've created two trust funds, one for each of those, those contracts, one for Verizon and one for Comcast. And if I'm right, Heidi, I think the Verizon agreement will come up next year?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so do we use?
Comcast one will be up, it's standing committee tomorrow.
Got it. And do we use those trust funds for expenses? What do we?
Those trust funds?
Money sit there? What do we do with it?
Those trust funds are regulated by, by the original federal act, which they can only be used for specific instances, typically only for capital expenses for our purposes. So in other words, upgrades to, to our cameras, to the things in the chamber, to the control center.
So we, we regularly use it? We, we utilize it?
Yes, we utilize it. A percentage of the money is also given to PCTV for their operations in the
Do we have a balance in those trust funds?
Yes, I have that on the bottom of the page there. There's six hundred and three thousand dollars. And I don't know where we're at with payments to, to PCTV on that or whatever else we're buying right now. But currently, six hundred and three thousand to Comcast in the Comcast trust fund and three hundred seventy two thousand in the Verizon trust fund.
Now, maybe I should know this, but when we put money in a trust fund, do we invest it? Do we collect interest off it? Do, does it just sit there until we use it?
It, monies that go into bank accounts for the city have specific requirements and limitations. Our investments typically are overnight funds based on the Fed rate.
So we're collecting a little bit of money from it. It's gaining for us a little bit. I mean.
Very, very slightly.
Very slightly, right, right, but it's like getting interest from a bank, basically, yeah. So we don't want to touch the balance out. We can't invest it. So it's uh almost a million dollars now between the two. We, we, we need that money to have on hand to pay for the things that you were pointing out.
That's, that's correct. There's a contract with PCTV. Um, I can't remember if it's a quarterly payment or a uh annual payment, and Heidi may know that offhand. Uh, but we have a agreement with them which takes the bulk of the money out. And then, of course, we have expenses for the Cable Bureau, regular expenses for upgrades of equipment and for other things that uh they may need.
Yeah, I mean, if we're utilizing it, that's one thing, but I guess if a trust fund keeps growing and growing and we have a million dollars there and I think about the money we can gain on that if we invested it properly rather than just had it sit there. But um the answer is we utilize it, we need to have access to it. Okay, um, and Heidi, Phillips Park, I believe, is a, or Rec Center is one of the um three Rec Centers you're you're going to be um up putting upgrades at?
Um, is that for the, for which thing, the digital hubs or?
I believe it's included in the hundred and eighty-three thousand for tech upgrades, the three recreation centers?
I think that that's I think that that's if it's from, if it's through us, that's probably um something that DPW would be able to help me answer.
You know, I, okay.
I actually don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Okay.
Because that, we would, we would organize that with the Facilities Group Division out of um DPW, but I can check and get back to you with it.
It's part of the ARPA funds, Director.
And uh, my last question is four twelve, um, do you have a scheduled move-in date there or? How's, how's that for your department?
Um, so we, we won't be moving into that, into that building. Um, I, that's uh something that the Facilities Group within Public Works would need to answer when that building is opening. But IMP, IMP, as far as I'm aware, is going to remain in city county buildings.
Oh, okay, so it was PLI. It was um, do you know the, Bill, do you know?
The three agencies that are moving into four twelve?
Uh, the URA.
URA.
The um Housing Authority and then different city, front-facing city departments. So uh the, the one-stop permit shop's supposed to be there and a couple other entities that are probably be determined.
Great. And and Heidi, I know your budget here is eighteen, little over, or almost nineteen million dollars. So when the police department, this might go back to what Councilwoman Gross was saying earlier, I'm not quite sure, but uh, when the police department needs new computers, say, that's included in this number or do they?
Correct.
Okay, so any department in the city of Pittsburgh who has to purchase any software, any computers, anything related to it, all comes out of that budget?
Correct. Mobile phones, devices, MDTs, computers, software.
Okay, that's it for me, uh, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Director Norman, thank you again for for being here and as always, as 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 others have said, for your excellent presentation. It was informative and helpful for all of us and um you know, I wouldn't expect anything less from the Department of Innovation and Performance to have an excellent presentation, so thank you for that. And let it be said, I mean, you've illustrated it so well, but let it be said again that so much of what you do serves other departments in the city, not only the city, the city of Pittsburgh as a whole and residents of the city, but other departments, and your budget really reflects that. The fact that so little of it is is personnel relative to other departments, but so much of it is, you know, in property or in uh the different, the different kind of categories that you broke down serving other departments and their technology needs and our cybersecurity needs and programs and applications. So drilling down into the discussion we were having um related to the questions that Councilwoman Gross brought up about employees and the the ability to carry out and follow through with the number of services and applications that we're, that you will be providing. Um, first question is, is that, is it, is it a sheer number of positions needed? I think I know the answer to this, but I just wanted to ask it. Is it positions necessary? Is it positions that are there but unfilled? They need to be filled? In which case, perhaps we need to look at salary, benefits, et cetera, or is it a mixture of both?
Well, we do have some open positions right now. Uh, we've had, we have had some turnover, people promoted into other positions, some folks left and uh moved away. Um, once uh the COVID pandemic began to seed for, at least for a little while, they moved to new locations. So we do have some positions that are open, but the, the type of, um, what I'm really talking about that, that is, it's just becoming something that's quite challenging is there is a need across all of the departments and a real desire to upgrade the services that they provide to the residents of Pittsburgh. And in many cases, it is, um, these are services that the software may be end of life or don't, doesn't really provide what the public is asking for. In other cases, it may be that devices, um, you know, network equipment, those types of things are end of life and need to be upgraded. Um, it's the expansion of services and all of the new things that the departments really need and want in order to provide the very best that we can for our residents. That's where um my department is getting super stretched because, you know, if you're, if you're holding the number of people steady or shrinking it in my case, and you're asking like, and I need these fifteen new service areas. In some cases, just for the implementation, in other cases, it's both implementation and ongoing maintenance of those systems. Um, that's where we're getting a little bit stretched. So it's, it's gonna be an ongoing conversation, I believe, next year and trying to figure out like when we're talking about new things, expanded services, new services, upgraded upgrades. That's where we're gonna have to have some pretty serious conversations around not just what can we afford, but what can, how can we together figure out a way to have enough people, um, skilled people to implement those new systems? And then if if it's needed to maintain those systems in an ongoing manner. Um, that's where it's just becoming a little bit difficult. It's not surprising, you know, every organization, I will say, has this, has this issue, right? IT is, as you said, is a service to all of the other departments in the city and all of the other departments absolutely want. They want new things, they need, you know, even council and the clerk's office. There are certain things that are really needed in order to be able to run the business of council in, in a modern and sustainable fashion. And those are, you know, we are, we are going to become more IT-driven, more automated, not less over the years. And so having fewer positions to be able to help the departments do those things is just, it's something that is, that is a challenge. Um, and, and one that I think it's something that we just need to be working really closely um over the next couple of years and figuring out how we're really going to manage this and balance, balance out the needs versus what we can actually handle.
Or understood. Um, that makes perfect sense and the way that I envision it in my head or sort of picture it in my head, I know how organized you are and your department has projects assigned to people, broken down by priority, update, you know, you're, you know, you have these, you know what's coming, you, you know what you're working on, you know what's coming. Is there some sort of five-year plan for these projects or even two- or three-year plan where you can say definitively, this is everything that we're gonna be, these are the new service areas we're entering into in the next couple of years. Here's how they're triaged out by importance. I know that in the Technology Council meetings, when it comes to budget priorities, there is the urgency versus importance kind of metrics that you use. Um, and, you know, these are the ones where we think we only need additional capacity for the startup period, not so much for maintenance. Here's where we need, you know, this is the kind of project we need for startup plus maintenance to help prioritize whether it is a consultant, a management service or um a full-time employee that we need to hire. Um, because I'm sure as all of us agree, the last thing we want to do is hire an employee who is really helpful for half a year to a year and then, you know, isn't actually, uh, they're so, they're such a niche within their field that they're not as helpful afterwards. So they're not as necessary. Do you have that framework? Do you have that sort of uh visualization charted out?
Yeah, thanks for asking. So we do in terms of, we have a software roadmap. Um, we are aware of when contracts, for example, are coming due because we have to work back at least two years to begin looking at like, you know, do we need to replace these really large systems? Um, so for, to a certain extent, and even in network and infrastructure, we definitely have, you know, two or three years out, we're looking down the road in terms of what's needed. Even for, for example, the upgrades to all of the facilities in terms of the wiring and Wi-Fi and making sure that all of that is upgraded the way we have done for CCB. Thank you, Mrs. Gross, for uh acknowledging the, the hard work that the team did there. However, what we can't always anticipate is the demand from the departments, right? So um, you know, public safety, one of the bureaus, the police bureau, may need something or decide that they really want to go in a direction where they need a new type of software or they need something and they need IMP's help in order to acquire it, implement it and maintain it. We don't always know about those things two and three years ahead of time, right? What we're doing is our business relationship managers work with the executives' teams in each of the departments. And we do try and get a handle on, during the, the summertime, we try and get a handle on what do they see coming down the pipe in terms of what they think their needs are and ask them to help make the business case so that the Technology Leadership Council can really determine, you know, who, who's gonna get to go next? What are we going to budget for? Can we handle this in terms of personnel? Um, and that is where the, the process, I think, over the last couple of years is getting better and better in terms of really looking across the board instead of sort of each department fending for themselves. So I really appreciate the, the consistent work and effort that all of the department leaders and department directors and chiefs and the department liaisons have put into beginning to work together and really understanding the landscape of IT across the entire organization and figuring out like what exactly is going to make the biggest impact and how can we afford to do it?
Along tho- those lines, so you, you do have it, you can't always anticipate departmental needs or urgent requests, understandable. And unless we had just spare business relationship managers, you know, ready to go at any given moment, that's, you know, that's gonna be difficult to anticipate, but um I'm glad that you're thinking about that and that the, the teams are working together as part of the council. Are there, I'll just ask it, are there instances where a council has been asked to approve or has approved contracts with, for a new service area without the appropriate staff to be able to start it up and and maintain it?
Um, you know, that can happen sometimes, what, where.
Is it cut off before it's, you know, uh, you know, at the pass before it gets out of the council into council, into the Technology Council and over to city council?
Right, we've been, we've been trying to really stop that kind of thing by working closely together within the Technology Leadership Council and the Governance Committee to really look at what kind of resources do we have. Sometimes it can happen that our, our eagerness to update certain systems or to take on certain projects outstrips the uh, the, the capacity that we have for increasing staff. And I think in a couple of instances, um, that that has happened. And, you know, I will, I will say that I think in the case of particularly the um Traffic Management Center Network and the Smart Spines Project, that, that in particular, um, you know, I had long conversations with um Director Ricks in the early part of the summer, um, where she was really asking for help and I was saying, okay, but like, I literally don't have anyone to help you. I'll need to ask for those positions and I, and I didn't, obviously didn't get them. Um, so I'm gonna have to work with the new director um of Domi to determine like what can be done, how can, like as a team, how can we assist without overpromising what my staff is actually capable of delivering?
Okay. So, um, you know, as council members, we can, and as Chair of the Committee, we can be asking those questions as these come up, you know, uh, as a backstop to ensure that projects are moving forward with the support that they need from your department.
Thank you.
I guess one last question, um, plain easier question is off-the-shelf, moving from manual to, you know, digitized or, you know, uh, non, non-manual is, is obviously a benefit and cost saver, a time saver, all of that. Move from off-the-shelf, uh, move from kind of homegrown applications to off-the-shelf, can you elaborate on the benefit there?
Oh, I'm happy to. Uh, some of this originates actually from council, so um, I hope you guys don't shudder, but I will, I will invoke the name of B3. That's an organization that the city has been working with for a number of years. And part of the reason that we, that we have needed to work with them is because many of the systems that our departments rely on in public safety and police, uh, finance and other systems were originally created as custom applications in-house by the city. Um, and they're, they are so old and out of date that some of those, the original applications, like there is no documentation on the applications and some of them are written in languages that literally I cannot afford to hire someone that even knows how to write in that language. So we had to hire an outside firm to maintain those systems. And as you know, council ordered IMP to be done with that particular um uh, agreement by the end of twenty twenty-two. There are a uh small number of custom applications that is still being supported by B3 and the intent of my department is to have all of them either sunsetted because they're no longer needed or replaced with commercial off-the-shelf software that the vendors that sell the software actually do the maintenance and have the developers so that we aren't under the gun to hire really expensive software developers to continually maintain those custom applications.
So in some cases, we might be paying more because we're getting built-in uh, staff and um, you know, whatever it is, maintenance and support for those applications, but we're probably saving time, energy and training people around a homegrown system and probably, probably other benefits as well, cost savings as well that, that equal out in the end, so. Is that, is that basically right? I mean, cost-wise, it might be a little bit more.
I think that's absolutely true. You know, the fact is that when a lot of those applications were created, it was a different era in IT. Today, it is actually more efficient and cost-effective not to create custom in-house applications. Um, we simply do not have the level of salaries and ability to attract software engineers um away from the private sector within the city of Pittsburgh. It, that, it's really, at, at this point in time in the world of IT, it's really a non-starter. Most organizations today, including governmental organizations, do not create custom applications. You wouldn't create a custom word processing software. That's what Microsoft Office or one of the other, the other big, big software companies will create for you. We, we shouldn't be doing that really at all, in my opinion.
Or understood. Former uh employer of mine, um, not to be named, had a uh in-house system that we, that was built probably in the eighties or nineties that I was using as late as, you know. the early 2000s that relied on, it was a contact system, database system that relied on DOS technology. So I can certainly appreciate the need to upgrade for employees' benefits and also not to build our own for the, for other reasons that you elaborated on as well. I have no further questions. Any further questions from council members? I think we are about to wrap up. Thank you, Director, for your time, for your energy and for your presentation today and all the good information. Thank you to council colleagues. And I am about to move to recess. I want to make a couple of meeting announcements.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had to acknowledge that off-camera, we were over here as old people joking about the software languages that might have been used in all of these homegrown things. And just, just feeling the pain and joking about like, you know, the, the software being literally decades old that was homegrown and being written in like Fortran and things like that. So it's just like, not anything people actually use anymore. So anyway, we were just having a good.
Hashtag 80s I T love.
Yes, yes, exactly. Lived through it, so.
Exactly. As I was saying, the, the old contact database from my old employer, employer, which relied on DOS technology. So it was, yeah, it's always good to upgrade for the benefit of everyone.
Started before there were mice and mouses and menus.
Meeting announcements. Our next budget hearing will be tomorrow, Wednesday, December 8th at 1:30 P M. The Department of Human Resources chaired by Councilwoman Kraus. Thursday, December 9th, 10 A M. Department of Mobility and Infrastructure chaired by Councilwoman Coghill. And with that, I will motion to recess. Thank you, everyone.